To access your cameras. How does that work?
So.
Can they get into your system to look at your cameras to?
They can if we give them access.
If you give them access.
So typically what departments will do is they'll have an MOU. Like we would have an MOU with the Sheville Police Department. And say, hey, we're gonna work together here. We can access your cameras, you can access our cameras. We would probably do those with all of our surrounding counties. Because, I mean, obviously, you know, we're gonna wanna benefit from the cameras that they have to help solve crimes in Bedford County. But they're gonna expect that on their end too. So you're trying to create basically a net. Because, I mean, obviously crime doesn't stay within your boundaries. So that's a big help to us.
If it's gonna be on the island here, is it gonna catch all three directions at one time or only one at a time?
It'll be one direction straight toward the tracks.
Oh, it's not three.
So towards the tracks, not towards the school?
No, it is one direction. So the way we have all of our cameras set up is it's catching inbound traffic. Catching the rear of the vehicle from anything coming inbound. That is also how we can also work with other communities. Is because when you take Coffee County, Lincoln County, Rutherford County, they're typically set up the same way. Well, if we have a camera pointed this way and they have a camera pointed that way, then that's where we can land together.
So you can only read the license plate if they're going west?
Correct.
So does Flock own the monopoly of all the systems around? Is that kind of the main? Is it just Flockers or systems that can you, do Flock share? Is that like something you can share with other systems? Because it seems like it's kind of a, it's the only thing.
There's other options out there. Some of those, I actually had one that contacted me that wanted us to go with them. They use facial recognition and I was like, that really doesn't benefit us. You know, the city of Sheville might want that on the square or something. But that's not something that we would really be able to utilize. But the biggest reason that Flock is so popular is that information sharing between agencies. That's why so many people have gotten with them. Because their system doesn't integrate with other people's systems. So Flock has gotten really big because of their ability to share information so that I can see Coffee County's cameras if they allow that. In fact, that, that road rage incident where that young lady was shot in the back of the head on Longview Road, is Flock cameras what we caught them on in Manchester. Because they instantly turned around and went back to Coffee County. So, you know, having that ability helps.
But that was only in a one, one direction for you to, if it could've been in another direction, it wouldn't have?
Yeah, I mean, this is not, yeah, I mean, Bedford County can't afford, yeah. We can't afford to put a camera on every possible direction. I wish we could.
Well, you did mention that Flock doesn't do facial recognition, but the other programs do. So what makes you so confident that Flock is not going to start implementing? I'm, I'm just curious, why, why do you think that once it's up, it's like, oh, we're just gonna start doing that? Because the other systems do.
I, I can't tell you that five years from now, Flock doesn't say, well, hey, we're gonna do facial recognition.
So where's that low on honey?
I know that we don't want facial recognition. We're not paying for facial recognition. So if they decided to offer that at some point, our contract is for what we have, that would be something that, I guess we'd be having more meetings like this again, saying, hey, is this something that we want now? Or is this something that we wanna stay away from?
But once you access somebody else's system, then they give you a little password to get in there and then they change the password so you can't get in it? Or once you're in, you're in all the time?
Sounds like a lot of money.
So, well, that's kinda like if we were to say, we're gonna have a camera. A search, you gotta remember, everything on this system is based on, I have to put, there's some input I have to put in there and say, hey, I'm looking for this vehicle, can you find it? If I have an MOU with Coffee County or Lincoln County, then yeah, it will maybe come back and say, hey,
What's an MOU?
This is a memorandum of understa-, or, an agreement between the two. You know, we'll let you use ours, you can use it, you can use ours. So, but yeah, these cameras aren't for just monitoring, because they're just still photos. So, and everything that you're searching for, you have to have a specific thing that you're searching for. So you have to have that tag number. Or I've gotta be looking for a blue Chevrolet. Now granted, it's not really any good if a crime happens in Bell Buck at two o'clock. You know, I'm gonna be looking at what vehicles are here nearby during that timeframe. If all I got is a blue Chevrolet and one pops up on a camera in Nashville, that's gonna be useless to me. How many blue Chevrolets are there? You know, I gotta be looking for something in this timeframe.
So it will just kind of flag? Well, it'll show you, say, hey, there, there, it might be a match in, say, Kentucky. And so then you have to ask for permission to view those pictures from somewhere else? You have to ask?
Yes.
I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to understand.
We don't have an MOU with those individuals. Kristen, if I'm speaking wrong here, please correct me. But if we don't have an agreement with those places, we're not gonna have an MOU.
Okay, so the MOU is like between us and, say, Coffee County forever? Or, you know, however long, you know, it's an extended, it's not just like, here's a one-time pass?
Yeah.
We have an MOU here?
Yes, in no cases do yes. Unless we just decide for some reason we don't wanna play with Coffee County anymore and we cut them off.
So then what do you do, like change the password or how do you give them access?
We just cut them off. They don't have access to it anymore.
Deputy Chief, if I could just add, as far as the data sharing, you're a hundred percent within control of which other law enforcement agencies you elect to share the camera network data with and vice versa. And you're correct, if you decide that you no longer want to share with a specific law enforcement agency, the administrator, the Flock administrator of Bedford County's system would be able to just go in and uncheck that box. And you would no longer be sharing your camera data with that other law enforcement agency.
And you could do that on a, because it could be in a situation like Kentucky. Well, I mean, obviously they don't have an MOU with us because we don't have cameras yet. But that's a one-time deal where we called and said, hey, we're looking for something. And they, they could say, yeah, okay, just one time, yeah, hey, we'll help you out. That doesn't mean that we have to be in a long-term relationship. But, you know, but if something comes up like that, we could choose this time we're gonna help you out. And, you know, call the special community and see if anything else and we'll see how it goes, so.
As law enforcement officers, that's kind of, I mean, wouldn't you think that that, that's kind of unlikely? That you're gonna be like, mm, click, I don't wanna talk to you anymore? You're gonna just kinda keep that open once you establish a relationship with another place that has those cameras, once you, when you want to keep that open?
Yeah, very likely.
So you're sharing with not just, it's not just us, you know, you guys looking at it. It's gonna be the other county, it could be another state, it could be anywhere, and then everybody.
And how often are they wrong? How often do they pull over the wrong car? How often does Flock make a mistake?
Well, it's, it's technology, so a mistake can happen. But that's where you're.
So they draw guns on the wrong car and the people are sitting there thinking, what the hell is going on?
Well, that's where the human oversight comes in. If we were to send a deputy to, we had a Flock hit on a specific vehicle, well, the first thing he's gonna do is verify that what I'm looking at is what it said I was supposed to be looking at. So if it read the tag wrong and as an officer I pulled up behind that vehicle, I'm like, that's not the tag that you told me I was looking for. Then, then that's where that comes in. So there's always gonna be that human oversight part of it. And, you know, that, that is absolutely the first thing you're gonna have to do is verify that what I'm seeing is what I was told I was supposed to see.
Takes time to do that, okay.
But that happens even, I mean, that happens even today on anything. I may check out with an individual and their name is the same as somebody that's wanted. There's a lot of characteristics that are the same. But it's my job to verify that this is the person I'm looking for. Not just take one or two pieces of information and just run with it. So it's, that's kind of the same thing that we always do.
So how do you, if it's only supposed to take the license plate picture, how is it able to get the color or distinct markings on the vehicle like stated here?
Well, it takes a photo. So it is a photo. It's not, it's not just a picture of the license plate. Because it's taken basically an image of what it sees at the time that it takes a picture of that car. So, and it, it has to have that reflective surface to read the colors. That's one reason that, and Kristen, this is the way it was explained to me by, by your people. That's why it can't, it can't identify a human being, because we don't have that reflective metal surface that it's able to actually read. It can only see something like that, so.
Deputy Chief, actually, our machine learning is able, so it takes that, that still image of focused on the rear of a vehicle and then we utilize machine learning to categorize those different elements in the photo focused on vehicle. And so we actually don't utilize that reflective piece. However, I would like to, I think it's really important to point out that within the system, even if, you know, someone, a person happened to be captured in an image, just incidental to that, that image being captured, there is no way to search for a person in the system. There is no filter within the system that can, can identify people. So we just wanted to highlight that piece.
But so it does, though, take pictures of people?
It is a photo, yeah, it's a photo. So whatever that picture really is, yeah, it's, it's a photo.
So it's kinda tracking you then, like, if they can pick up that picture of that photo? I mean, some people are private people. Maybe they don't wanna know how many times you've been marked.
And here's what I would say to that, and I understand the concern there. But when I look at, Flock takes pictures and stores pictures for thirty days. Your own Flock cameras, and you have been for years, every day.
Yeah.
Every day. And not just Flock, I mean, that isn't one company. I mean, there's so many cameras. Your own people's Ring cameras every day that you go by. Your cell phone is tracking every move that you make. It listens to your voice. I mean, we, we know that, when I think of my own family and my own personal security, what Flock is able to capture from me is so far down the line of what I would be worried about. My cell phone that I carry in my pocket, I'm far more worried about what it knows about me and what people can steal from it than a photo.
You turn it off if you want to, I mean, I turn mine off all the time.
And the other thing is, for me to find you, I gotta be looking for you. I mean, like, I gotta know that this is what, this is the car that this person is on and I'm looking for that car.
I'm just saying, I know there's lawsuits out against Flock, you know, I was kinda reading about it. I know there's a lot of positive with it, but there's also some negative with it. You know, and with any technology, I mean, even social media, there's great positive with it, but there's a lot of negatives with it.
Yeah.
And we see the negatives every day. We see the arguments, the fights. So negatives, I guess, is what I'm worried about, you know? I mean, I know this one guy said he was tracked five hundred something times in four hours. And I, I know he has a lawsuit going on in North Fort Virginia. But it, it may seem silly, but it's not to that person, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So in our little town that keeps historical and, you know, like they want certain things done, you know, they wanna keep it that way and they're gonna have this big camera here. And I moved here because I wanted to get away from the big city. You know, I, I like the little town that I live in. And I feel like, wow, I don't know. If you like having the National Guard walking down here. I mean, it's not as extreme as that, but I feel like that insecurity.
The way I view it, Martha, is, I'm not looking for Martha.
Oh, I know that, I know what you're saying.
I'm looking for who comes into this community.
Someone that's gonna do something about it.
To try to disrupt what you have in this community.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's what I'm worried about. It's, the people that live here, I'm not worried about. It's those people that don't.
I don't like to live in here, I mean, I'm not worried.
They're only here for, for bad reasons, you know? So, I mean, that's the way I, I look at it. And like I said, you know, I'm, I'm a citizen of this county just like everybody else.
Right.
This is not something I'm worried about. And I'm, I'm, I'm a little hesitant when it comes to AI, you know? I get it, you know?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question about the AI? Can I ask a question about the AI? Because we keep bringing up the AI and there's a lot of questions on here about the AI. But did you not say a minute ago, and was, I'm not sure if Officer Alex, it was you or if it was Kristen, that if the AI thing became available to it, that it has to be an opt-in?
Yeah, I mean, they're not gonna.
So it's not like it's just gonna be added to the system?
Yeah, and I guarantee you they're gonna pay for it too.
Right, 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 right. That's what, yeah, so it's not, it's not just a system upgrade. It is literally, you have to opt-in and pay for it, yeah.
Well, what if they, okay, so Flock has investors. I know this is far-fetched, but it happens. Like, so what if that, they made their money and they feel like selling it and one of their investors buy it? And they do stuff like, stuff that you don't know about? I mean, do you know when they upgrade something on it? Or, I mean, are you gonna see it flashing upgrades? Like your phone, you know what I'm saying? I mean, it's just, once it's here, it's here, you know what I'm saying? So I'm just, I'm just curious.
So I think, if you could repeat the question, it was a little difficult to hear.
So if, if, if Flock was to sell the company to somebody else, how could we guarantee that another company didn't come in and decide that they wanted to do some bad things with the camera system and maybe add some technology?
I'm not sure. So I can say that, like, Flock has no intention of being, of being sold. Our CEO is very committed to growing, to growing Flock. And our, we are very committed, one of our core stones really is that all of the data is owned by our customers. And we have heard throughout the country that this is a very important piece. Because, number one, that makes the customer in control of their data, especially when it comes to data sharing and use of the system, so that it can align with community values and any applicable laws. So that's something that I really do not see in the, like, in the foreseeable future. Again, because so many of our customers are, that is an incredibly important piece, is that data ownership. So while I cannot predict the future, I will say that I full-heartedly know that our CEO has, that I'm aware of, has no intention of selling this company and again, would not risk giving away that data ownership.
Do you have any Chinese investors?
Not that I'm aware of. I will reach out and get a concrete answer for you. I have not had that specific question raised, but I'm happy to, to get that information back to Deputy Chief so we can relay that.
What's the dimensions of the camera? The, like, the actual camera?
Yeah, roughly how big are the cameras?
What, what's the size of the camera that you'll be using here?
Yep, so the camera, it weighs about five pounds. The dimensions are about just under eleven inches long, about five and a half inches tall by four point seven inches wide.
Okay, yeah, that gives everybody an idea of what's gonna be out there.
Could I ask something about the concern of somebody sneaking in new technology? Am I correct in assuming that the, um, the technology is limited basically in its capability to what it currently can do? I mean, it doesn't have the capability of all of a sudden, you know, something that takes a ton of memory, like facial recognition, you couldn't just throw it on those systems? Is that correct? Onto those cameras?
Yes, something like that, that alters the scope of the current contract and what, what Bedford County has entered in, that intention of the, the function of the camera. Something like that, we would have to come to and it would be an opt-in feature. We do provide upgrades of the system and the hardware while we're under contract. And I think a good example of something is really just the current function improvement. So night vision. Prior to our night vision feature, the images captured in the evening were not great. They could, they really needed to be improved. And so we implemented night vision, which provides a very clear image of the rear of the vehicle, that still image. So it doesn't alter the function of the camera, but it enhances the quality. Anything outside of that would either be an opt-in feature, would likely come with an additional cost. And that would be something that would have to be a decision made at the local level.
The communication between the camera and the cloud is one-way, isn't it?
Yes.
It is not two-way?
So the camera captures that image in, and then it is encrypted the moment that image is captured. It's encrypted in transit and then it's encrypted at rest while that image is stored in the AWS cloud for that thirty-day life span.
Thank you. But, Kristen, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're, go ahead.
Christine, I'm curious about the, the suits in reference to Flock and the constitutional rights of the American people getting violated. Can you address any, or answer anything in regards to that?
So, and I think it, it came up a little bit earlier when there was concern about, about tracking. And as far as, we full-heartedly believe that community values and laws, civil liberties can be kept intact and you can also utilize this tool for public safety. Something really important to know or remember is that this camera is capturing a still point-in-time image focused on the rear of a vehicle and it's capturing the image from a public roadway. It, it does not have the ability to continuously track a vehicle. And then coupled with the use of this tool is also Bedford County's policy and practice, that's why it's additional safeguard so that we desire to protect your civil liberties as well while also providing this incredibly impactful tool for law enforcement to be alerted to impacted vehicles, to help solve crimes and to bring, to bring peace to victims. So again, we, we full-heartedly believe that the two can exist. And I think Deputy Chief has spoken a lot about, you know, their practice and, and oversight and the system is able to be audited to ensure that it's being used in accordance with community values as well as any laws that are in place.
And also just to kind of piggyback off of that, when you're talking about those constitutional rights, that's always a concern with anything, technology, when you're capturing data. But, and she, she mentioned it here, the biggest thing is none of us have those constitutional protections when we're driving down the road. That somebody can't take a picture of us. I mean, it's, it's the same, if you're outside in the public, anybody can video you, anybody can take. We deal with those calls all the time where somebody's like, they're taking a picture of me and I didn't want it to happen. And we have to be the bad guy and say, look, there's nothing we can do about that. You know, that's not a protection, you're not in your home. That picture is not determined to invade the privacy even of your vehicle because it's just taking a photo from the outside. So I know there's been some challenges to, to Flock based on that point, but the courts have always found that you're out in the public, you, I mean, anybody can take a picture of you. There's, there's really not much you can do about that. And if we start taking pictures in your home, then, you know, obviously that changes things. Or if we were able to take a photo and zoom down inside your car or something and see what was going on inside your vehicle, then even maybe so. But, yeah, I mean, a picture on the roadway is no different than if you drive by and anybody in here just says, hey, there.
What if a drone and saw it over your house? I mean, there'd be, there'd be.
Yeah, well, that would be, yeah, but these are obviously not drones.
A camera that someone just takes a picture of, it's not.
Uh, yeah, and they're not pointing at people's personal property. They're, they're specifically pointing down the roadway, so, yeah.
I just have two quick comments. One was just about, back to what Betsy was referring to. I think, and I just wanna make sure that I'm clear on this, that if it's, if you upgrade the software and you gave permission for those extra things, it would be the same camera and that software would be downloaded to that camera, correct?
Yeah, that part, I don't know the technology.
Is that right, Kristen?
Was that very capable of that?
Just to, just to say that if, if you do a software update for new capabilities and they were approved with a contract and those kinds of things, that it is able to do that, correct? In the software update?
There is the ability and with those features, it's an opt-in. So we wouldn't default, give Bedford County that access to that feature.
I got you, okay, thank you, make clear, I just.
And we actually have a call-up information related to the, the question about Chinese investors?
Yeah.
Sure.
Um, yes, so Matrix Partners, one of our early-stage investors, has separate offices in China and India. These offices have separate ownership, separate investing teams and decision-making processes and back-office operations. The three separate partnerships do not co-invest in the same companies and do not share company data.
Okay, and then my, my second, thank you very much. There was a side comment made by a town employee and, and that's what I wanted to address tonight. So I'm just gonna read this very quickly. "I've learned a valuable lesson through this situation, one I hope that the board and the mayor have as well. My lesson that I wasn't at the original meeting when the AI surveillance system was first discussed, because I wasn't there, I missed the opportunity to give my input at the beginning when it all started. It's been a valuable reminder to me of how important it is to be present and involved early on. But it also made me stop and think about something deeper and that is how citizen input is being viewed in our town. Through this process, it has often felt as though citizen input is seen as an inconvenience or even a frustration and that really concerns me. We are not here to make things harder, we're here because we care. We live here, we raise our families here and we want to be a part of what happens in our community. Our voices, whether in support, and we support many things, or in concern, should be heard and respected. Public comment should never be treated as a box to check. It's a vital part of the decision-making process. And that's especially true when something as significant as an AI surveillance system is being voted on." Yes, I understand that the goal is to keep our town safe and, and that it's gonna catch somebody dangerous coming through. And I agree with that and those are good things. But I also, you know, we, the reason we had our questions and brought them to you is because I wanna make sure, did we think about the impact that this could have on the privacy and security of our citizens? And that's just what we're trying to do, is to get those answers and there's nothing wrong with that. Those are important questions and they should have been part of the conversation before the vote was taken. Another concern I want to raise is about public notice and transparency. I understand that the dates of the meetings are posted on the window at Town Hall and I do appreciate that. However, I think some clarification may be needed. Since the ordinance likely outlines how meetings and agendas are publicly posted, should the agenda, once it's set, be added to the meeting notice that is displayed on the window? Or does the ordinance specifically state that the agenda must be published separately? And if so, does it provide a timeframe for when that information should be made available so that citizens, as us, have adequate time to plan to attend and prepare questions? Citizens deserve to know, not only when a meeting will take place, but what will be discussed. Without that information, it's difficult to prepare to ask informed questions or participate in decisions that affect our community, affect my family. When discussions and votes happen without clear, timely communication, it gives an impression, even if unintended or intended, that citizen involvement isn't encouraged. And that is something I want to have on the record tonight. I truly hope that the board and the mayor and the town employees will take this as an opportunity to rebuild trust, to encourage participation and to recognize that people want to be part of the process. We're not trying to slow things down or make meetings harder. We just wanna make sure that before a decision is made or decisions that are made, the people who live with those decisions have a voice in them. So again, thank you and I, and I do appreciate everything that you guys are doing. But as a concerned citizen, I sincerely, sincerely hope that moving forward, the town will prioritize transparency, early communication and a respect for citizen involvement. Because when we work together, when citizens, board members, mayor, town employees truly listen, that's when a town thrives.
Amen.
Let's get back to the question. And this is the, number three, I think we've done two on the Flock already. You know, the system involving AI, having the capability for facial recognition, lip reading, the idea of vehicles based on characteristics other than tag number. I think we've already hit on the, the facial recognition, which it won't, the lip reading, which it won't. Again, what about the, the identification of vehicles, other characteristics than the tag number? That would be what it focuses on, correct?
Yeah, well, it's the tag number and just the vehicle, against the vehicle characteristics.
Okay.
Yes.
And would it show up any bumper stickers and everything else?
Yes, yeah, it will, uh, yeah, we, there's a lot of data that we can use as search criteria. If somebody was to say that it had a bumper sticker, then we could utilize that in our search, so.
If I got any questions or addressing those.
I just, I had one more question. So if, as we were talking about in the future, if they were to come out with those capabilities, can you kind of describe what the chain of command was for who would, like, you would receive there? Like, hey, we have an update? And then who would be making those decisions?
I'm glad you said that. If I agree with talking about that and I wanted to touch on that. So you saw in the, one of the answers in there where I talked about the history of the, even if they came out with some new technology, it's not something that the Bedford County Sheriff's Office can just say, hey, just, you know, add it in there on the side and we'll pay for it, don't worry about it. If you noticed in there, we first presented it to the Public Safety Committee because we had to have their approval and, and know that they were okay with it. Once they okayed it. Once they okayed it, we took it to the Finance Committee because anything that's going to be paid for has to be approved by the Finance Committee. We don't get to decide that. And then once they approved it, it had to go in front of a full commission and they had to vote and approve it. And then of course, because where this particular camera is, this is Bell Buckle's property, then I had to bring it here. So I mean, there's a lot of steps, um, that it has to go through to make sure you get those permissions. And a lot of opportunity for, for people to, to know, like, hey, this is what we're thinking of. Um, now I can tell you, and I don't ever, I don't like to say never and always and, because I can't predict the future no more than Kristen, you know, can, so. But I can tell you from my own standpoint, I am not interested in facial recognition. I am a firm believer in, you know, we have our rights granted us by the Constitution and I don't intend to trample on those rights. I don't have my rights trampled on. So it's not something that I, even if they offered it tomorrow, it's not something, number one, the value of it. What we would have to pay for it versus what we'd get out of it, it just wouldn't be worth it for us. Um, because we're looking at highways, traffic doing fifty-five miles an hour. Now, y'all's is maybe a little different, people driving a little slower through here, but, um, yeah, most of them, yeah. Uh, but that's not even something I'd be interested in anyway. But it would absolutely go before several stages to be approved. I don't have the authority just to say, yeah, Kristen, sign us up, you know, I, I, there's, there's more to it.
Yeah. I have a question too. When they presented this to y'all, did you ask all these questions yourselves too? Did you guys try to find out a lot of information about it?
Yeah, we, we looked at, I mean, as, as much as we could think of, uh, you know, because for us, a lot of it is, and a lot of, for us, it's a lot of ROI, you know? It's, it's what are we going to invest in it versus what? And then you are also looking, believe me, every decision I make, one of the first things that goes through my head is, what's the public's perception of this going to be? Because it really doesn't matter what my intention is, what's a perception of it going to, going to be? And trying to address those things, so, um, you know, that's the first thing I wanted to make sure of. I don't, I don't want it to have the ability to do traffic enforcement, I don't want it to have facial recognition. And one of the things that eased my mind a lot was just the fact that I knew that the only data that it captures is a still image and after thirty days, that still image is gone forever. And I, I like that about it.
So you never have to get a bigger cloud because the cloud only gets so full, they start pushing out.
Well, I can tell you, I'm, I'm not a technical guy, so, and I'm a firm believer that I don't care what is out there. There's probably somebody smart enough to hack it. I mean, I'm a, or I'm, you know, I'm sure there are people smarter than, than I am out there, I know. But all I can look at, I can't look at all the hypotheticals when I'm making a decision on something or we can never do anything. We still be riding horses around here, uh, because somebody could mess up driving a patrol car, somebody could mess up doing this. So I have to look at just the hard data and then, and try to make those decisions. And when I look at Flock cameras and I know that Flock cameras, and not only Flock cameras, cameras of all different brands exist everywhere. I know that I'm on camera just about everywhere I go. So as a, if I'm a Bell Buckle resident, what I'm voting against is the benefits. Because I know that unless I stay right here in Bell Buckle and we don't have a Flock camera here, that's the only way I'm going to be able to escape one. So what I'm voting against is the benefits that come with it. And I personally see it like if I was out in the middle of the ocean, just swimming for my life and a boat came up and I said, I'm not getting on that boat because they might see it. To me, that's, that's the way my brain thinks about it is that, that's a hypothetical, but why would I not, why would I not take that chance and get on that boat?
So all the technology, you have a positive and a negative.
You do, you're right, you're right.
It weighs the negatives and it's a good thing.
And I agree with you, I think social media is a root of all equals, so. So anyway, that's just my, my take on it.
I have one question, it takes us a little bit back to, um, number two. But my deepest concern about this is it's an expensive platform. And at this point, Bedford County's ponying up for it. Is there any chance at all that this is going to be devolved to, oh, well, we think Bell Buckle needs to pay for this camera or these upgrades? Is there any chance that this is going to get pushed on to our town finances?
The only way that could possibly happen would be if Bedford County decided, we don't want Flock cameras anymore and Bell Buckle decided, well, we still want one and Bell Buckle got into their own agreement with Flock and did their own contract.
It's an entirely own contract?
Yeah, no, I couldn't push the call.
And approved by the board.
Okay.
And then you have your own cloud.
Did, did Flock contact you or did you contact Flock?
No, we, we actually reached out to Flock, um, and of course, in that history of kind of how things went as far as how we got to that point, we started noticing, we saw that other communities were using it because this is not brand new technology. Uh, then it benefited us, uh, like the case that I told you about. Um, and we, we thought that, man, this is something that could really benefit Bedford County. We tried to do a joint grant project with the city, um, with that, uh, VCIF grant and we just didn't get it in hand in time, it was first come, first served. But it was important enough that the city said, well, okay, we're not doing a collaborative effort anymore, we're going to do it on our own. And so they got in about a year ahead of us, um, and then, uh, you know, we wanted to pursue it too. So we reached back out to, uh, Flock and, um, actually through the city, we called them and said, hey, who's the rep that y'all used? And they introduced us to Will, who, uh, is the one that we ended up dealing with and we just set up a meeting with him and just wanted to sit down and just talk about it, so that's kind of how.
Does Flock have any funding federally?
Does Flock have any funding federally?
I believe, and I can, I can, I want to double check on this. I believe we have one federal contract with the US Postal Inspector Service currently. And I'm not aware of any others, but I can double check and get that information back to Deputy Chief.
Is this data hooked into any other system?
No, no, the, the data is, it's, it's our data. So it, it goes to the AWS cloud, that's where it stays and after thirty days, it's, it's gone unless we needed it for evidence and then we would pull it, but then we would store it just like we would any other picture that we took in our, with our case file through our evidence repositories.
Does Flock, uh, store all of the data and then each one of the communities delete their own?
No.
Or is there a massive, um, center that, that stores the data?
It automatically dumps. Tennessee state law says that, uh, all that data has to be dumped within, I think it's, I want to say ninety days maybe on the state hall. But, um, it's, Flock's is a lot shorter than that, but, um, obviously it's within TCA code because TCA code gives us longer than thirty days, but Flock dumps it after thirty. But it's not something we do manually, no.
Do you have a contract with Flock?
We do.
What is the, how many years is that?
That's just a one-year contract with a option to renew for the forty-two thousand.
So if you don't renew, the cameras will be obsolete. Will you, will they be taking them down or will they just leave them?
No, if we, if we don't renew, then they'll come get their equipment and take it with them.
I would be curious how many competitors Flock, uh, Flock has and do it. And apparently y'all are the largest in law enforcement agencies contracting. But many private businesses have license rights, like Walmart, uh, Home Depot. Is that accurate or do you have a lot of competition? Mostly it's their private sector and yours with law enforcement?
Um, so great question, so there are a handful of competitors. As far as Flock, Flock actually, um, we provide our technology to not only law enforcement, but neighborhood HOAs as well as commercial businesses. We actually started, um, selling our license plate reader products to HOAs and neighborhood organizations. And I want to make a very clear distinction that the law enforcement system is different and from the private sector, from our customers. Um, law enforcement is able to have a public-private partnership if a private entity such as, um, a business or neighborhood organization would like to share their camera information with law enforcement. Law enforcement, we allow that, but it does not go the other way around. Private entities would never have access to law enforcement camera systems. I'm going to make that clear, but we do work with private entities.
Okay, and as you say, if, uh, Kroger wants you to check out a license, if they call over one of their cameras, y'all can do that, but it wouldn't go the other way, Kroger won't ask you to, I guess they could ask you to.
Well, well, Lowe's, I think is the only one I know of around here that has a backtrack that I know of. Um, they use it pretty much for their own, uh, loss prevention, uh, because they have people that they have thrown off the property. But if they did have an incident that happened and they had a tag number or a vehicle, uh, description and it was a law enforcement matter, then yeah, they could share that with us.
Thank you.
You said Lowe's, right?
Question number five was a necessity for this system, uh, you know, what you, you wrote down. Uh, having some, somebody on duty like that, that's costing time. Uh, they, it's on duty twenty-four seven. Uh, I sort of play that with a smoke detector in a house. You know, it's on duty twenty-four seven, trying, trying to protect the family. Now all you have to do is, uh, put in a battery every now and then, so, uh, that's sort of a step explanatory if you found it all about the, uh, the cause versus, uh, identity versus the camera.
Can I ask something about number five? Um, is part of the reason for asking to put it in Bell Buckle the volume of traffic we have coming through Bell Buckle? Uh, because we are a tourist town?
It is part of it.
And also the fact that, uh, people will go out of, sometimes criminals will go out of big cities to small town to try and not be noticed?
Yes, and especially like, take an event like the crap there. How many cars are just parked, you know, in an area like that? And, and people that are in property crimes, I mean, they see this stuff advertised, they know there's going to be a lot of opportunity there. There's so many people, it's easy just to hide in the crowd. So, you know, you, you know, they're, they're very likely to come here just to, just to target the, the people that are here. Not to mention the fact that, uh, I mean, I hate to say it, but, you know, we do deal with a lot of mental illness and you never know when somebody sees something on Facebook or an ad somewhere and they're like, hey, that looks interesting. I think I'll show up next week. And, and you guys are, you know, you guys are a famous small town, uh, you get a lot of, so that was part of it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
The other question about concerning number five. Number six, deals with ICE and kind of that set to use this information. Basically, the only reason why ICE can build to make use of information obtained by the state system is strictly limited and controlled.
So if an ICE agent calls and wants access to that, would you ask for a warrant and ask for what the circumstances are? Are you just going to give them access to it?
No, I mean, if an ICE agent called, of course, that would be, that would be a rare occurrence. So I think I would already know like, hey, there's something specific they're definitely looking at. Um, we would have, I mean, we won't talk to them like, hey, what are you, what are you looking for and why are you looking for it? Because again, you know, when you talk about ICE and I know this is a sensitive subject right now politically and I, Bedford County Sheriff's Office, we, we stay away from the federal politics and stuff. But, um, I'm assuming most likely if they call, this is because this individual is not just here illegally, but they've been involved in some type of crime. And whether it be gang activity, whether it be, you know, property offense, something like that. So, I mean, if they've committed a crime, whether their status is illegal or not, it really doesn't matter to me. I want to help solve that crime, so I would absolutely help. Now, you know, obviously I think everybody knows that, you know, cartels have infiltrated the United States. I mean, there's, you would be shocked at how much, how many people are around this area that are cartel affiliated. So if they had information, hey, there's an individual in your community, uh, that has these affiliations, I'm not going to play the political game and say, well, we're not helping you out with that. I'm going to help protect the people of Bedford County, that's, that's my job. But to answer your question, I don't know that we would ever say, hey, here's access, have fun with it. But depending on the circumstances, I, yeah, I would absolutely help them out.
Right, I mean, we all, none of us want criminals, but there's been times where they have, what have you used other things to track people who were not criminals, but were here illegally and they considered that a crime.
But they would, again, they would have to have targeted one individual specifically. Like, you can't put in there, show me all illegals that drive by.
Right.
You have to know that there's this person specifically that I'm looking at. And, you know, typically with ICE, because, well, I mean, I can tell you, there's five ICE agents that work twenty counties in Tennessee. Uh, and if you think about the number of people that their status is illegal, they're looking at the ones, there's a reason they're looking at it, we want to get that individual. Um, so there's probably going to be a crime that's connected to it in some way. Uh, but I almost speak for ICE because I don't, I don't work for ICE. Uh, but if you go to one of my answers where it talks about the data entry, the tag number, the vehicle description, the incident number, the reason for the search, that auditing process is, is crucial. To know that whoever's using it and how they're using it fits, number one, within the law and number two, within our policies at the Sheriff's Office. And I know that, uh, some of it, uh, brought my attention that there was an issue in Illinois with a, uh, I don't think it was an ICE agent, but it was a Homeland Security agent and an immigration search. And, you know, and somebody said, well, see there, somebody could misuse it. I looked at it just the opposite when I saw that. I looked at it as the auditing process works. It was, okay, if somebody did something that Illinois didn't like, the state of Illinois didn't like, it was found through that oversight process. Somebody used it, they didn't use it the way we want it to be used and we're calling you on it. Um, so, you know, that's, that's a good thing. Because if there is somebody that, that used it for the wrong reasons, you want it to be called out immediately and, and address it so that it doesn't happen again.
Well, and again, wouldn't it be very difficult to hunt for, uh, people who are killed here illegally? If all you can go is by the tag number of the state, the color of the car?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why I say you have to have that specific person's car that you're looking for for a reason.
What is you, this is just a random question, say, I still ask you, you said, no, we're not going to give you that information. We all think that's important, we don't think this person's a criminal. And then with the Flock, would Flock say, hey, we'll help you out and give you the information? Can they get into your information without you giving them because they own everything?
Kristen, I'll, I'll let you answer that.
Yeah, so great question and the answer is. And it's very clearly stated in the contract with Flock that Bedford County, Tennessee owns all of the data and Flock cannot share that data without express permission. The only instance where Flock would be compelled was if we received a subpoena, a legitimate subpoena. And in that instance, it's also outlined in our contract, because our customers own the data, we would immediately notify Bedford County that we have received that and work with their legal team to address. So no, we cannot provide ICE access to Bedford County's camera network.
Their permission. Right, because they don't own it, you own it.
Correct.
Okay.
I think some people might be concerned, but it may not be that they have, you've given them permission to look at something. It's kind of the dishonest people or organizations that may want to have access to that information and can get that information because if anybody, any of you guys know anybody who's had, um, an order protection, it's a piece of paper and it's not going to keep anybody safe. People can walk right through that, same thing with any kind of contract. What's to say that somebody, because the way that some things have been working recently, people can just break rules and not have any consequences, people can just do something without any kind of repercussions and it's just a contract, that's what it is. It's not like I've got this under walking key. This is just paper saying, well, we're not supposed to let ICE or we're not supposed to let another county or we're not supposed to let people who are not supposed to look at it. It's just paper, that anybody can share, I mean, this is just like, anybody can hack a phone or a computer. If they're smart enough, I'm, I mean, that's just how that works.
Yeah, and, and, and like I said, I, I'm not going to sit here and say that, you know, somebody can't be smart enough to hack something. I, I don't, I don't know for sure, but.
It's not that hard.
I will disagree with you on one part, though, those pieces of paper, they do need something.
Legally.
Yes.
But what? But what, it's my people's laws.
You're right, an order protection can't necessarily keep somebody from doing something wrong, but that order protection is what gives us the teeth to be able to enforce something before that happens, if that makes any sense. Without an order protection, I have to wait till it's over.
After it happens.
With an order protection, as a law enforcement officer, I can act before that.
After it happens, because you, you can't do anything until something happens.
If somebody pulls at your house, I mean, I, I can, I can arrest them just for being at your house.
Understand, but you, do you understand what I'm giving you?
I do, I do, yeah.
Okay.
And the contract's kind of the same way. It's not a guarantee that somebody can never do anything bad. It just gives you those teeth if it does happen.
But you're giving them the opportunity, this is kind of like if you have a camera here, here's the opportunity to, I mean, I, I'm, I'm just being real, I'm saying what everybody else is thinking. It's like, here's the opportunity for something negative.
Could Flock have ever done that?
What?
Right?
Well, and I guess my next question would be, what, if somebody, if somebody broke into that and they could see those pictures, what, what would you do?
I'm not necessarily saying people who are, who are hacking into the system. I'm saying in general, anybody, ICE, government, anybody else.
Like, if you said no, and then they went to Flock and went over your no, would Flock give them that information? This because they're a federal government and they feel like, oh, we need to do this? Or would they say, no, we can't do this, you have to go to Bedford County?
No, and I trust that Flock wouldn't do that, just because Flock has so many contracts that it would take Flock one time to do that and get caught before they would have zero contracts and they're, they would be out of business.
I know they're going through the lawsuit with something like that, and I was just wondering, and the outcome hasn't come. So, I'm just wondering, would that happen again, or?
I'm going to tell you, if, if it was to happen, for somebody to circumvent the system, it's not going to be Flock. It's going to be, somebody calls another agency and says, hey, can you give me access to this? And that person messes up and gives them access to it. But then again, that's where that auditing process comes from. Um, and that's, and that's why I say, any tool you give us, any tool you give us, I will never be able to stand up in front of you and say, don't worry, nothing bad can ever happen with it. I just, I can't do that with anything. Like I said, even down to our patrol cars, our firearms, the, the databases that we already have access to, I can never make that absolute promise. The only thing I can promise is that there's a process in place for oversight. And if we find out that somebody tries to abuse that authority, then we're going to, we're going to take action. Because I, at the Sheriff's Office, I can't put ourselves in a position where we just erase the trust with the community because then we're useless. So, I have to take action on something like that. So, that's really the only thing I can promise.
Can you share some of the auditing process and what would happen if, like, someone such as an officer or somebody circumvented and did something they weren't supposed to do, and what the repercussions would look like?
So, it, we could, I mean, it could range, because a lot of us will come back to what was your intent behind this? Did you make a mistake and you didn't understand? Do we need to do some retraining to make sure that you understand when and when not to? Um, you know, that may be a mild reform of punishment. And if it got down to something where, well, like what she was saying, like, you helped somebody violate an order protection on purpose? Well, that's a, that's going to be a criminal offense, you're going to jail. Um, you're not just getting fired, you're, we're going to put you in jail for that. So, it, it depends on what happens and what the intent was behind it. Was it an honest mistake, um, or was it something that was way more negligent than that? Um, so that's hard to answer, because it could really fall into all forms of punishment.
Andrew, we've, we've worked together, I know you.
Yes, sir.
Been with me a lot of years, and I trust you.
Okay, I'm glad.
Um, I think that the overwhelming concern is, will the rule of law be maintained in this community? Because we are seeing the rule of law being flouted across our country. And I hear you say that you respect the rule of law. Because I, I absolutely hear that clearly in your, in your answers. And I guess I just want to get your reassurance that the Miranda rights are in effect, will be in effect for all of Bedford County residents.
Yes, uh, I mean, I can guarantee you, as long as I have anything to say about it, it will be. Um, I'm a firm believer, if people call it the Bill of Rights, I refer to it as the Bill of Prohibitions, because what it does is it prevents the government from trampling all over our rights. That's the whole purpose of it. Um, so, the, the Bill of Rights doesn't grant us anything. It protects us from the government from trampling on it. And I'm a firm believer in that, and I'm not going to assist in, you know, the government trying to trample on that. Uh, I am also a firm believer that when it comes to the criminal justice system, that it's better to let, uh, a hundred guilty men go free than put one innocent man in jail. Uh, you know, I, I believe in that, so, um, but I can only speak for myself on that part, and I know the people that I've worked with feel that way. I know my agency feels that way, but I can't tell you what's going to happen twenty, thirty years going to come either, so.
And I wouldn't ask you.
That, that's all I can speak for.
I, I guess I just, I just wanted to.
Would you agree with question number seven? Can we know with certainty how long the images, I think we've already discussed it.
Yeah.
Information extracted from these images, these stores, what government entity will control storage and how?
There's also one other piece that I'm throwing there. This camera is going to be on Bell Buckle property. If at any time Bell Buckle decides, we don't want that camera on our property anymore.
We take it up?
Let them know.
What if enough?
We'll call Flock and we'll say, we can put that camera somewhere else, ain't going to be in Bell Buckle. Uh, so.
What if the residents are the ones who don't want it, but then it's still going through? Because I think there might be enough residents who don't want this, but you guys proved it, right? I mean, I'm, I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, I mean, I won't do it, just if somebody calls and says like, I'm going to.
No, but I mean, right now, in general, I mean, right now, in general, I mean, it was, it was Bell Buckle. You guys actually approved it, right, to be there?
And did you all ask questions like this before you approved it, or did you just?
I mean, did you, did you ask if the, if your, if your, if the residents actually wanted something like this? Or did you just go ahead and say, we have to do it because maybe Bedford County asked us to do it? Or we think it's the right, I mean, I, I mean.
Did you ask those questions inquiring about it at all?
Yes, not in anything like this detail that we have gone into tonight, which is a welcome experience. Then we also voted to have a public meeting to discuss more.
Thank you.
As, as John Anderson, I'm sorry, he's not here. Uh, and my own thinking is, we, we don't have police, we have gone a long time without a police in, in Bedford, in Bell Buckle, without officers here. We are reliant on the Bedford County Sheriff's Office for our, for our enforcement. This is something they think is necessary, so we have to trust these folks. We're dependent on them. They are enforcing laws for us because we don't have our own police. And I'm advised that if we did have, do give retire policemen, he or she will have complete access to everything they've got. So, they can trigger requests. It's also, I think he's right, we've talked, the deterrent value. Uh, carjackers, welcome to Bell Buckle, we're not going to get your license plate here. We want that kind of image. Uh, and there are, there are hundreds of these things, they're everywhere. They, your, your license is getting recorded, all, my license is recorded any time I go to Murfreesboro, to Shelbyville, Marshall County, Hatta.
It was always tied.
Cali County, Manchester County.
One, one thing that I think, it seems me interrupting.
And so, yes, we talked about, we're not in this depth, I'm glad we are talking.
One, one thing that, uh, I think is disturbing, and as this lady over here so eloquently, uh, put it, is, it seems like we were kind of left out of some decisions that were going on, and we had to pull, you know, to get information from you. And that was what is frustrating, is that you are making important decisions. We've got a water sewer system here that, you know, has issues. Um, you know, electricity, whatever. But this is an issue of privacy for our community. This is, this is helping the Sheriff's Department, it's helping our safety. But we were not originally informed about that. All we knew is we were going to get surveillance cameras. And the inference of that is, we were going to be watched over by Big Brother or something. So, what we wanted to know, and what we were disappointed is that you evidently didn't want to know, is what this system is all about. How it was going to record the, the, the camera, what it was going to do, how it was going to do it, where the information was going, how it was going to wind up being used. And it was, um, frustrating in trying to get that information without this, I don't know, it was like you, you didn't want to share the information, or you didn't know it and wanted to tell us.
Russ, I'd like to respond to that.
Good.
Um, we did get very detailed information when we made the decision. Two, I have always urged residents to attend the Board of Alderman meeting, because it is their meeting. Third, we are a representative democracy. Um, in other words, people elect us to represent them. And I would urge everyone to attend Board of Alderman meetings. I do not feel it's the responsibility of the Board of Alderman to, um, tell everyone what we anticipate discussing, because we know the topics, but we don't necessarily know how the discussion is.
But you have an agenda.
Yeah, and the agenda's available.
And the agenda has topic items that are going to be, be discussed, and.
Are you requesting that the agenda be posted at the website?
Uh, on the website and, and, and sent out as an email.
Well, it's a big decision like this, when people felt like it was invading the privacy.
Because we don't always go onto the website to check out what you guys are doing any more than you come to my website to see what I'm doing.
Well, that's a difference, we are pure representatives.
So, I'm adding, you know, like you send out the water bill, would it be a possibility of just saying, this is on the agenda for this month's meeting?
Is that possible, Lisa? Thank you.
And we did send notice for these two meetings through the, the people who live inside.
Can you speak up a little bit, I'm sorry?
We did send the agenda on both of these meetings to email addresses within Bell Buckle City.
I think that was after Russ came up, but after I had gotten one to show Russ and Frank.
Um, I have, well, I don't know, I'll have to get with y'all. Whoever has a water bill, you should have an email.
I get the water bill.
So, we grouped it by, uh, you know, who's in the, in, in within the city. So, I sent those out to everybody.
So, if someone who resides within the city, what should they do if they don't receive agendas from you? Should they come?
Make sure they have the right address.
Well, what I'm saying is, should they come to town hall and say, this is my correct email address?
Yeah, just, because I'm getting it from the water that.
I had one, I think it was Tuesday, maybe, Lisa, you sent that to me, or Wednesday. So, I let John and Russ know, and then we had Russ, no, it was Tuesday, because I had Russ come up here on Wednesday before noon and talk to you to ask, have y'all sent that to people by email? Because none of them have gotten it, only I did.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't either, and I get the water bill each month in my email.
Okay, I just responded to you directly, I didn't have to send them out to everybody.
Right, yeah, that's why I figured I had one.
So, could we just kind of sort of make it a, a practice from now on, like a, and to, for people as, you know, incompetent as me, to say, Russ, we have a meeting on Tuesday, you know, be there at six o'clock, and this is what we're going to discuss?
You can add, if, if someone comes up here and asks you to be on the list, other than who all that you already have, you can add that to it.
Oh, yeah.
So, that's what I said, just, anybody that's not on the list, just pass the word, come up to Lisa, and she will get you added to it.
That's right. Thank you for that.
When, when was the website updated? Because it hasn't been current when I've checked it.
Uh, we put the notices on there last week.
It was, it's on the bottom, you had to scroll down to the bottom.
How long, how long has that been happening, though?
We just really started doing it, to be quite honest, and we're trying to do better about.
And thank you for that, we appreciate that.
Yes, thank you. I have another question.
It's kind of referring to question number five, what is the necessity for the system? But you talked about in here, um, about how much it costs to hire, train, and equip one new deputy for the county. So, you're also saying that not just AI is doing this with the Flock, it's not AI monitoring, it would be actual human beings monitoring. Where would those human beings, are they, are you going to be pulling them from your already, your, your staff already? Or are you going to hire new people? Then, if you're going to have to hire new people, then why not fit human beings in Bell Buckle on the ground and let them do the job here instead of sitting there watching a camera all the time? I'm just curious to know if you're going to be pulling somebody, or if you, because you're going to have to hire somebody. So, you're going to be pulling your deputies from somewhere else to watch the cameras? So, they could be patrolling or doing another job on the ground, but they're going to be watching these?
You don't watch the cameras, that's, that's the thing about it. You don't, you don't watch them.
So, AI is.
So, so this is how it would work. Um, if, we say we had a stolen vehicle in Bell Buckle, and Deputy Woodside is, maybe he's over in Unionville. Um, he would get an alert, uh, because he would be an authorized user. He would get an alert that would let him know that we just had a stolen vehicle, and this is a description that just passed the camera in Bell Buckle. Um, he would then try to intercept that vehicle from wherever he's at. So, there's no, there's nobody ever just watching.
Not necessarily watching, I didn't mean it like that, I apologize, but like.
But it would be like a mobile alert.
Okay, that somebody's going to have to verify that information that AI flagged.
When, when, when he made contact with that vehicle, then that is his next responsibility, is to verify that that is a stolen vehicle. It wasn't a mistake by the AI or anything like that. So, he's probably going to run the tag again, just to verify it through dispatch, and then that tag information's going to come back. This is a stolen vehicle, um, and then he's going to act on that part of it.
So, everybody's trained to type in what the, if a car has been hit, and how to pull the car up?
So, yeah, so, so there's two ways that it would work. So, one is through like the NCIC system, uh, where, which is where all of your wanted persons and stolen vehicles and things like that, right? And that's not going to run wanted persons, but stolen vehicles it would. The other is from what we call hot list. So, let's just say that, let's just say Deputy Woodside pulled up here and there was a hit and run accident. You know, somebody left the scene. And the driver of the other vehicle said, this is the tag number, or said, I don't know what the tag number was, I know it was a gray Nissan that hit me and took off that way. And he can put that information in, into his hot list, and then if the camera up the highway or in Murfreesboro or in Shelbyville hits on it, then all of a sudden, if he can locate it, we actually had one that, that exact same thing happened not long ago, the family vehicle was known as well, with the damage that would have been on it from that vehicle. So, um, so there's nobody that's actually monitoring the camera per se. You just have this information, what we call hot list, where these are the vehicles that we're looking for, for whatever reason, and if it hits on those cameras, then it gives you the alert.
Can the citizens rest assured that, uh, if Flock does get implemented, that if your time in Bell Buckle's twenty-five percent, it's not going to drop down to ten percent because we have this system in place?
Yes, because there's fourteen of these. So, they basically, I don't know if you saw the map, but they make a circle around the county. So, it's not going to affect the way we patrol, other than it's going to notify us of things that before we never saw. Um, I'm going to be honest with you, my biggest fear, and I've told the commissioners this, my biggest fear with these. my biggest fear with these cameras is I have no idea what drives under our nose every day that we miss, and what these cameras are going to find. And I know that I'm limited on manpower. How much work is all of a sudden, it's going to pile on, and we're like, "Well, now we can't keep up"? You know, that's, that's my biggest fear, honestly, is that I don't know what we're, what we're missing, and that this might put us on the, so, which I guess is a good thing, but.
Am I correct in understanding that it takes the image and converts the data to a database? And so, basically, are you searching key and parameters that then search the database?
Yeah, so like Kristen explained, part of the AI technology is for the tag. Because it's just taking a picture, right, but that AI technology is able to decipher those letters and, you know, what state the tag is from and all that. So, the rest of that information, when you're talking about color and that, I mean, the machine learns that and categorizes it like she says, and that way, whenever we put in that we're looking for this, it knows how to make those comparisons and say, "Okay, well, this is the type of vehicle you're looking for. Is one of these it"? And that's, so, yeah.
Okay, that was my understanding. Thank you.
There are a couple of questions the lady proposed that had not been answered to in writing here. They basically, I guess, boil down to how many license plate reader cameras do you have in operation? He asked in the first six months of this year, and I would just, how in general, can you answer that?
I don't have that metric available. We work in over 5,000 communities nationwide, and depending on that community and the size and need, and how many cameras they have in place, many, but I do not have that metric.
The last time I was told, they had just went over 100,000 as well, and we started the process around 85, so.
Maintenance, like, what if a Wimster comes in there, knocks it down? Who's going to pay for it?
Flock.
Flock pays for it.
Yeah, it's theirs. They own it. We own the data, they own the.
They own it.
Yeah, we just mix it.
They're cool.
So, I will, just to be in full transparency, if there is an instance of vandalism or damage, that is, the city is, or, I'm sorry, the county would be responsible. Those are very rare occurrences. I want to say it's less than 1% of our camera is nationwide experiencing an instance of vandalism or damage, but the county is responsible for that. It is not the entire cost of the camera. It is a portion. I believe it's $800 to replace a camera, but again, those instances are very rare. But that is the responsibility of the county. If there is any maintenance or issue with the camera, that is on Flock, and we will come out and rectify that situation and make sure the cameras are operational.
Again, I couldn't really say yes or not. There's a question of how many cameras you have in towns with less than 450 population?
I do not have that metric either, and that's something that I can reach back out to our team to see if we might be able to distill that down and get a number, and I'll, I will do my best to get you that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the town about working on the schedules camera on their insurance? In the event of vandalism or anything like that, or?
We don't know if you're going to put it on the insurance for the town.
We don't.
Yeah, we don't. Zero cost, let's wear for the city.
Going to make a motion and get it drawn?
Can I add one other thing? It's something that I mentioned to you last week, is that at these meetings, it's difficult to hear anybody. I have bad hearing anyway, but I would like to request that the town purchase a microphone system and sound so that everyone can wind up hearing what you're saying, because, you know, you're talking here, but people back here can't necessarily hear you. And, yeah, exactly.
They borrowed Andy's for this, her karaoke system with the microphone.
It would have. Just going to echo for this.
So, but, but my point is, is if we could have a permanent system that we could hear you speak, and also that there would be recording so that Lisa, bless her heart, doesn't have to be doing her shorthand in order to write everything down.
You do record it, don't you, Lisa?
So, can I request that? And I'd be happy to make a contribution to it. I'm sure probably there's some other people.
Take recorder.
I, right now, have been just recording it on my phone, and when I get my notes and stuff done, I do delete it.
Well, you said, we need to have a town recorder.
Yeah, I was going to say, well, I have to do something different, because like I said, I'm using my personal phone.
Yeah, thank you for.
I didn't want to have all that on my phone.
I've been uploading the videos just to Google Drive when I attend, when I record the meetings. I've just been updating them to Google Drive, so that way it stores there and it's off my phone. I say as I have my phone, have full storage in the middle of the meeting. But that's one way that you can do it, just something like that. That way we can.
Yes.